Just have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Bob, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Two additions to the board agenda. Under Personnel 10A, we have added as the last entry, a replacement for Pam Frank for her keyboard specialist position. And under Item H, the revised independent employment agreement that we had previously discussed at multiple personnel committee meetings and board conversations.
Then I need a motion to approve the agenda with the changes. Motion by Sue. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. And just for the record, too, Barb Sandy is excused tonight. Item three is an executive session that we need for the purpose of personnel, so I need a motion to approve the executive session. Motion by Carrie. Second by Dale. All in favor? I. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. And we shouldn't be that long. Where's Carrie? So we need a motion to come back out of executive session. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. All in favor? I. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. Let's go on to item five, which is our presentation from Stiegletz.
This is Ray. Members of the board, we may have a schedule issue here. Reached out to the team that was presenting and they haven't responded as of yet. I'm not sure if they saw the executive session on the agenda and thought maybe we're going to start a little bit late. So I'm going to try to track them down, but if we can move on to the next item, that would be great.
All right, then we'll move on to our summer programs presentation. Who would like to present that?
Numbers were good, solid this year. We had, like I said, seven sports, the average per day. Boys and girls soccer was thirty-two. Track and field was sixteen per day. Baseball seventeen per day. Football twenty-four. Lacrosse twenty-seven. Boys basketball twenty and girls B-ball eighteen. Each week was kind of a new sport, something different. They were two-hour sessions, like I said, usually finished with a game and they were all ran by our coaches. The response from that has been pretty good. We did a little bit of a survey, trying to improve next year and hopefully expand. The heat didn't help in some of the instances and we had a couple weather situations, so communication is going to be key and just getting out in front of that early. We also ran summer swim this year, which corresponded with the same dates. And those lessons were led by Anna Gifford. We had an eight, a nine, a ten, and eleven AM and they were about forty-five minute lessons. And we broke those up by groups. And the response to sign-ups was overwhelming. We had quite a few, over eighty. We capped it at eighty and then some started to filter out and we called them back. So our groups averaged around ten to twelve by the end, but many of those numbers dipped way off the last couple weeks as people got prepared for for school. So each each group, each, you know, organization opportunity here was, you know, to benefit the kids. And each each day was was run by our staff and we had a lot of kids on campus throughout the day. So it was good.
As it is, I think the only negative I heard was that they wanted it to be longer. Parents and kids. So everyone I talked to was, you know, had nothing but great things to say about it. So kudos. Anyone else?
Mr. Bartosik, I think you have a JV football game happening right now, right? All right. Did you want to go to that?
That was your lifeline right there, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. So we'll move on to item C, our school safety and reopening. Dr. Beeler?
Terrific. Thank you, Mrs. Ray. Today is the fourth day of student attendance. It is absolutely wonderful to see our students back in the school buildings. Well, Prospect has some difficulties with the opening, which Mr. Brightenstein will be addressing shortly. I know that the students' parents, the teachers, the staff and administrators have been working exceptionally hard there to make the best of the challenging situation. So I thank you for the work that you've done so far. Our current school practices really have not changed much since my last report, but I'll review those just so everybody's on the same page. We know the students are returning to school five days a week. All of our various layers of mitigation are being utilized, including the wearing of masks, cleaning, social distancing, encouraging hand washing, drinking fountains are shut down, testing, which I'll talk about in just a moment. We are consistently monitoring our local community and the community at large to determine what the transmission rate is and how we need to respond to that on a daily basis. So just a couple updates or refreshers. On school buses, all students are masked. They sit two per seat, if possible, and family cohorts and the bus seats are assigned. In common areas such as hallways, students are always masked and actually all adults are masked and stay within six feet of each other when possible. When students are in classrooms, they are masked. Most of our elementaries are already co-horted. They're social distanced to three feet and are also assigned seats. Individuals are quarantined when they are exposed, when they are exposed to a positive case for longer than fifteen minutes and are within three feet of each other. At this point, lunchtime is unmasked, obviously, and we strive for the six feet, but three feet is acceptable in those circumstances. With our extracurricular sports, if they are outdoors, there are no masks. But for indoor activities such as swimming and volleyball, the spectators as well as the athletes, when it's tolerable, are masked as well. We encourage our parents to come to the events. Our events are open to the public. Masks are not required when outdoors. In the rare event that we find a location where we're not able to attend, which we're not aware of of any at this point, we will make sure that we let the teams know so the parents can prepare for that. One thing I did just want to make a note of is that all individuals on campus, whether you're an adult or a student or a contractor or a visitor, are required to wear masks when in our buildings. That is a requirement from New York State. The district does not have a choice in that, nor did we have a voice in the decision. It is simply a requirement by New York State, so we follow basically the universal masking precautions. Additional regulations came about last Thursday. Last Thursday, we were informed that all staff in the district need to be tested on a weekly basis. Staff who provide evidence of full vaccination can opt out of the testing. Our nurse coordinator, Nurse Creed, is currently collecting information from staff who voluntarily provide evidence of vaccination. The guidance that we were provided lacks guidance on when the requirement starts, how the testing is to occur, what happens if someone does not get tested, and who will pay for the tests. So some districts are looking at this as it's happening immediately. The practicality unfortunately is that there are not tests available within our region. We are coordinating with Cataragus County to provide the testing. The county will provide testing once a week, but as I mentioned, currently tests are very difficult to find and the ones that are available have been reserved for those who are symptomatic or who have experienced a close contact scenario. So there are several questions about that, but I just want to reiterate the requirement is all staff, regardless of what your role is in the district, are required to be tested once a week for COVID. If you are fully vaccinated and provide evidence of that, you can opt out. We're not requiring or forcing anyone at this point in time to get vaccinated, nor are we forcing anyone to turn over vaccination cards. You can opt out of the required testing if you choose to. So there are obviously some logistical challenges to the new requirements, but we will work closely with our labor associations to ensure that the district is compliant and that we are fair and equitable to all of our employees and ensuring that we provide a safe circumstances for our staff as well as for our students. I did have a brief update just as far as where we are right now. COVID is in the community. As of today or this afternoon, we currently have fifty-six students who are quarantined and we have ten students who tested positive. Of those ten students who are currently testing positive, nine were already under quarantine due to someone else in the house being positive. So and that was prior to school starting, so only one of those students needed to be contact traced and as a result of the contact tracing, no one needed to be quarantined. So the takeaway there is that contact tracing seems to be working. School is a safe environment right now, but as I mentioned previously, we are absolutely keeping an eye on not just Cat County, but our quadrant, the southeast quadrant, to determine how many cases we have on a daily basis so that we can react. Yes, we have plenty of masks, both our fancy Salamanca masks as well as the disposable ones. The disposable ones seem to be the preferred choice at the moment. But we have plenty of personal protective equipment for staff and students as well as cleaning. Yes, they can contact myself or Mr. Haley. Mr. Haley has been exceptionally involved with everything so far.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Beeler?
Yeah, you said you weren't sure on the testing. Is it a rapid test or is it the lab seno test?
It will be the rapid testing. Rapid testing for the surveillance, the PCR lab testing for individuals who come to a testing site that are symptomatic or if it's post-battle.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Beeler. That's one of the first times I've heard that, actually. I'd just like to say, my voice has never been told to be a quiet little voice. We'll go on to item D, which is our Salamanca Board Retreat update.
So in early August, the Board of Education and the Administrative Central Office Cabinet met in Niagara Falls and we had our annual August retreat that was co-facilitated by our strategic partner, Education Elements, which has helped us with our long-range planning. During that course of the meeting, the board and central office administrative team talked about our vision and I want, thank you, Marcy, for bringing that up on the screen. Our vision continues to be raising resilience and compassionate warriors and in this time of global pandemics and uncertainty, teaching our children and our students, faculty and staff and community how to be resilient and compassionate to others, I don't think could be any more well-placed of a strategic long-range mission and goal for our district. Our mission is to maximize the potential of every warrior, regardless of age, and fostering those strong, dynamic relationships, embracing diversity and providing opportunities for the individuals to explore and to have inquiry in the areas that they are passionate about. When we look and we talk about our values, we talk about collaboration and communications. We consistently talk about what works for our community, how we can create unique educational opportunities for our students and for our faculty as well as celebrating the unique, wonderful success of Salamanca's culture. So during the course of the presentation, if you can flip to the next slide, Marcy, we have come to know these icons for respect, responsibility, literacy, interpersonal skills, life skills and critical thinking skills. And just as a general reminder, these are the culminating icons of respect, responsibility and the other mindsets that are attributed to the journey of our warrior from entry into our system at whatever age, typically a prospect and then continuing through Seneca as well as the high school. When students leave us, each of the icons have a slightly different visual representation. For example, in Prospect, we talk about learning to read and when students leave us, they're learning, if Prospect is learning to read, then the high school kids are reading to learn and expanding their horizons. Each of those six icons is built upon foundation skills that start at the level before they enter that particular school. What the high school students experience manifest and look like growing skills as a kindergarten through third grader and then fourth through seventh grader, all the way up until the time they leave us as students graduating at at the culmination of their high school career. If you can flip that. So when we met as the board, we talked about what our priorities were as a school board and we started having the conversation about what are our twenty-one, twenty-two Board of Education norms. We spent time talking about ensuring that all voices are heard, not just individual board members or administrators or teachers or faculty, but also students and community members, elders, members of our community that may not have been in our schools in quite some time. By ensuring that all voices are heard, we understand the perspectives of everyone involved and we take those decisions and those conversations very seriously. We also talked about how we promote respect in all of our interactions, kind of built upon ensuring that all voices are heard. If we take the time to listen to what other individuals are expressing as concerns, fears, strengths, weaknesses, points of pride, we can better understand diverse opinions. When we interact in a way that respects the interactions, we're doing several things. One, we're understanding, but two, we're also modeling for our students what it means to be respectful, to be critical thinkers and to have those interpersonal skills. We also talked about how we need to utilize the data in front of us to make decisions. The school district of today is vastly different in many regards from the school district of two thousand and five or two thousand and six. I think we can all readily acknowledge that just from what the buildings look like, but also the curriculum, the content, the instruction, as well as the enrollment looks like now. So we need to make sure that when we are making decisions, that we hear all the voices, we listen to all the voices and understand their reactions to the data and what it means to them. Hopefully, we're past the point as an organization where we simply make a decision based on a knee-jerk reaction that isn't necessarily completely accurate, maybe partially, but we need to go back and make sure that we have all of the information. And then one of the last conversations we had as a school district for our norms and the interactions that we have is responding in a timely manner to questions asked, questions posed or issues that may be proactive in nature and a little bit longer term of a solution or things that are happening in a timely fashion. We know from the circumstances that have happened with COVID that our responsiveness to the community has helped us communicate better to the community. We know that if we don't have the answer, it's okay to simply say, I don't know, but we will get back to you. And then it's critically important that we actually close that circle and get back to the person or persons with that information. I can't promise, and I don't think anyone can promise, that we'll have all the answers or that everyone will like all the answers, but when we start enacting and utilizing these norms to hear all voices, respectfully interact, use data to help drive our conversations and decisions and then respond in a timely fashion, that's going to help us catapult further into our strategic planning mindset. Marcy, if you could advance one more? Okay. When we talked about what our priorities are as a school district, we really focused in on four specific things. One, something we've heard consistently is what happens to our Salamanca students when they leave us? It's not just enough to get them across the state ed finish line of graduation or aging out at age twenty-one with a student with disabilities or a student who leaves us to go somewhere else. We want to make sure that they have all the tangible skills necessary to be successful after they separate whatever way, shape or form from Salamanca. And we talked about the next steps. We talked about committees. We talked about how we can engage the community in those world-to-work conversations. The world is changing. College is important, but so are trades, skills, crafts and the ability, and we certainly know this in the pandemic, of we need people to just simply come to work for us in whatever capacity they help enrich us. If we think that our drivers aren't driving instruction in our transportation department, we've missed it. Our food service people do more than just serve meals. They serve the fuel necessary for students to learn each and every day. The title is secondary to making sure that we prepare everyone to be successful in whatever path they choose. The second concern that we have and a priority for the district is improving student attendance. We know that many students did well in a virtual setting. Some students did about reasonably as well as expected and did okay and they have those supports, but we also know that a number of our students have chronically poor attendance. This is not new for Salamanca. This is not new for many school districts. We need a concerted effort from all angles, all avenues of the district to improve student attendance. And one of the conversations that we did have is that attendance isn't just student attendance, it's adult attendance too. You can be physically in attendance but not engaged and that's not much different than not being there. So we need to make sure that we're there, we're attending and we're engaged in those conversations. We also note and have noted for quite some time, I think exceptionally well, our focus on interpersonal skills and social emotional learning. Basically, in a nutshell, we need to make sure that kids, staff, parents feel welcome and comfortable and safe in our environment. If they don't feel welcome, safe and comfortable, then do we have the resources? Do we have the supports necessary to make students, staff, community and visitors feel welcome and know that they can reach out to us? Over the past week, with what has happened to Prospect, the reaching out and the connections from faculty and staff about the mold issue at Prospect is really manifesting in how are we addressing the social, emotional needs of our faculty and staff. It really does come back to communication and engagement and listening, but it also comes back to sharing information in a timely fashion. This will be a big task for us because this is highly interpersonal and individualized. What may be your social, emotional need to return to an academic or learning setting may be completely different than the person sitting next to you. It's constantly a moving target, but over the last five or six years, we have added family support workers, we've added mental health supports, counselors, psychologists, social workers. We've revised curriculum. We've added a social, emotional learning coach. We've added supports necessary to fill in those gaps that may cause a temporary or a more substantial interference with learning because of other outside, personal, external, familial, community, economic or other mental health concerns. This is the new wave for public education today and this is what every school district is going to be dealing with for the foreseeable future. And lastly, the topic that we talked about is capital planning. So I apologize for tonight. Stiegletz is actually going to present at the Finance Committee. That's our understanding. I did just get a text from them. Well, one of the concerns that we have is our ongoing facilities and capital planning work. We still need to address our accelerated five-year building condition survey. We know that we have issues with finishing phase three construction and possible phase four and phase five construction and additional referendums, property purchases. The capital health well-being of the school district does translate to how we are doing instructionally, how we are doing with our community. There's no better proof than how the STEAM addition has played out, how Vets Park has played out and how other capital improvements historically and most recently in the school district have helped the school district move forward. It does create a sense of pride, but there's a great deal of work that occurs from a financial perspective to make that happen. You can anticipate more conversations on where we are with our capital project work as our five-year condition survey comes back from Young and Right in the next few weeks as well as what may be necessary with additional referendums perhaps as early as this winter. And I think that's, there might be one more slide. Other potential priorities, I won't go into all of those. These were tossed out and discussed but didn't rise to the top four. It doesn't mean that they're not going to be addressed. It doesn't mean that they are less of a priority, although in some regard it actually kind of does. But these, the four previous priorities for the world of work, attendance, social, emotional learning and capital planning are focal points for this year. And that was the bulk of our retreat over the August fifth and sixth in Niagara Falls.
One slide, Marcy. So the one thing that I think I know as a board member is we don't want to lose sight of when are we going to check in on this? We want to make sure that we're staying on top of these priorities that we've established. And so one of the things I'm going to ask Janet is that to make sure that on our agendas, we have what our priorities are and when our check-in dates are going to be so that we don't lose track of them, that they're always on the forefront of our mind and that we're getting presentations and updates on where we're at with the priorities. So I thought it was very, the retreat was excellent. It really does help to have somebody outside of Salamanca come in and kind of lead the discussions and keep us on track because we do have a tendency to veer and it's good to just get those priorities out there, just like Bob said. It doesn't mean that we don't have other priorities that we want to do, but these were the four that everybody seemed to come up with and say that yes, that's what we want to focus on for right now.
So if I can just jump in here, on September twenty-first, there will be a deeper conversation about the capital planning portion and I would imagine shortly after about the capital planning portion. And I would imagine shortly after we get the five year condition survey and have a chance to go through that with Young and Right, we'll have a public presentation on that. On August twenty fourth, we did have a half-day session on preparing our students for the world of work. There were about ten or eleven staff members from the buildings that were participating with Ed Elements in working through some of those preliminary conversations. And that afternoon on August twenty fourth, we had a half-day session, slightly smaller group, but a little bit more focused on SEL work. And we spent a very productive half-day on the social emotional planning and work that's happening within the district to address the social emotional learning. So we'll get those on an update perhaps as early as October.
Any comments or questions? Okay. Then we'll move on to communications. No one signed up. Do we have Title Six here? Is Jeff Sun by any chance, Judge Cross?
No.
No, okay.
Title Six meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. We are looking for nominations for the committee. There's some Facebook posts going around looking for nominations, looking for interest support. I've talked to a few people about it. We just want to get more parents involved in Title Six tomorrow, six o'clock right here in this room. Come on down.
So let's move on to our central office message. We'll start out with Karen.
Um, I have two things. One, you're probably greatly aware of, but I'll say that for last. Um, Young and Right, we've talked a little bit about capital planning tonight. They are due to have the report to me on August or October fifth, so I'm hoping that the second session in October will be able to present to you. And then Bob had previously mentioned that in November, there'll be another board retreat that will deep dive into capital planning. So a couple of months and we get to dive deep into where we are with our five-year capital plan and where we hope to go with it. Secondly, in case you haven't heard, we have a little new food services program going on. It has been phenomenal. Um, the the staff and Drew and John and the entire, all the cooks and all the food service people have just been top-notch dealing with, as everybody is dealing with the closure of Prospect, but we hauled everybody from Prospect over to here and they're helping out here in this kitchen as well. I've heard great things from the kids and the staff. There's a ton of positive press on on Facebook and on social media, and several of my fellow business officials and actually other teaching friends that I have around the state are kind of a little upset with us because the program has been so well accepted here. And they're all like, well, how did you do it? What do you got to do? So I, you know, I'm speaking with them a little bit. Somebody else from the community has also inquired about Brigade. So our partnership with Brigade has been phenomenal. John and Ryan from Brigade were here for two weeks onsite, hands-on every single day from six in the morning until God only knows what time at night, working on stuff with our staff and for our staff and doing additional things for me for ordering, et cetera. So it's been really, really good. And as the article said in the press that we are focusing right now on the lunch program, because we wanted to to get that under our wraps first and get that, you know, really top-notch and then take a deeper dive into the breakfast program. So breakfast will look a little different come January. And then in September, it's ready to rock and roll with everything as usual. So hopefully, we'll get the kids back in at Prospect soon, and they'll also be getting the new and improved food services. And that's all I have.
I have heard great things about the food. I know one of the parents from Prospect said, did you see this lunch menu? Like, look at the items that are on there because they're just all so different. And the kids were excited about lunch instead of, you know, lunch, we got to eat the green lettuce again or the brown butter. So that was exciting. And I have heard nothing but positives. So congratulations on that.
Actually have one more comment to that. Um, they usually in past years, they've sold a ton of just cold sandwiches, turkey sandwich, et cetera, you know, PB and J and that kind of thing. They're actually taking them off the menu. They sold one turkey sandwich. So those are coming out, and they can concentrate on the other stuff that that is selling. PB and J is still going to be around because there are some kids that that's all they want. And if my husband was here, that's all he eats every, every day for lunch anyway. So there are some that that's just all they want. It's been going really well. So I thank you all for, you know, approving that that contract with Brigade and allowing us to take this chance. And the whole time I'm just like, this has got to work, it's got to work, it's got to work. And I should have known that the the staff that we have down in there has has been top-notch. And Drew came down and said the first night, even after the Prospect picnic, he's like, I can't believe how well this group is dealt and just works together. They don't argue and they're not talking about each other and they're not, you know, he said all that kind of stuff that he used to have and doesn't have, and everybody is just super helpful to each other. And and it's just going extremely well. So thank you.
Here. Does anyone have any comments for Karen? The Dr. Beal then.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate how much of a pleasure it is to see our students on campus in in full capacity as well as our staff. It really brings our buildings alive, and it's something that we've been missing for the past eighteen months. I did want to just speak briefly. Occasionally, I like to draw our attention to some folks who do a lot of work behind the scenes. So I wanted to speak briefly about one of those individuals who has taken on the task of ensuring the safety of our students as well as our staff. Ray Haley started working with the district in two thousand and eighteen. His first position was as an attendance officer. On March fourth of two thousand and twenty, he assumed the role of safety and security coordinator. So that's March fourth, right? Three days later, the governor declared a state of emergency, and exactly two weeks later, the governor shut down schools. So over the past eighteen months, the decision to have Mr. Haley fill the new role has proven to be a great one. He's developed our safety plan, serves as a liaison to the Cat County Health Department. He's our contact tracer and is really all things COVID and safety related. He's the first person an employee works with when they're concerned over potential contact, and Mr. Haley provides a high degree of guidance and assurance to them in what can likely be a troubling time. So I just wanted to extend a thank you for all the work that he does behind the scenes, and once again, welcome our students.
Does anyone have any questions for Mark? All right, we'll move on to the board message then. Brad, how about if we start with you?
I just want to say welcome back to everybody. I know my daughter is super excited about the food program. We don't have to pack her lunch anymore. So fingers crossed we'll get Prospect up and running soon. And I'm excited for fall sports.
Like to welcome everybody back to staff and students. I can't believe how how much students have grown over the summer. You know, some of shot up a whole foot, I think. But I just want to welcome everybody back and just remind everybody to be safe and vigilant. This won't be over until we have zero transmission.
Sue? Hello, everyone. I too would like to welcome everybody back and hopefully this, now that we're in the school and the kids are all here, it's got to have been very hard for the kids to be at home, learning on their own. And so hopefully we can catch up and the kids can get back into their regular routines. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to welcome everyone back as well. And also thank everybody. Thank you to our entire staff. Thank you for coming back with smiling faces. Thank you for coming back with open welcoming arms. Some of these kids couldn't wait to get back. Some of them probably were dreading the day. But you know, my my little one, she was, she was anxious to get back to school, but unfortunately, we're at a delay with Prospect. She was actually looking forward to a Zoom today. If that tells you anything, she got used to Zoom classes. So but she was excited nonetheless. But yeah, I really just wanted to say welcome and thank you to everybody and keep up the great work that you always do. And we'll get through this. Oh, also Title Six, I forgot to mention. I heard there will be pizza tomorrow at the Title Six meeting. So it Title Six meetings are open to anybody. Anybody can come to the Title Six meeting. The committee, there are requirements for sitting on the committee, but yeah, I hear there's pizza.
That usually draws a crowd when there's some food. I would also like to welcome everyone back. It's exciting to be back to school. I know that Prospect has had a little bit of a hiccup. And believe me, I've heard from a lot of Prospect parents that the kids are just so disappointed that they can't be back. So to the teachers out there, that should tell you that how much you mean to the kids that they just, they can't wait to get back into school and be a part of that. Just like Dale said, you know, please, everyone be vigilant, you know, wear your mask, make sure that we're following the guidelines because we want to keep these schools open and we want the kids here because it's not the same without them. I did go to the varsity football game Friday night, and we defeated Springville. So that was pretty exciting. I think we had more fans there than Springville did. So it was good to walk around and see so many parents with sporting all of the warrior attire. I counted, we had twenty-eight cheerleaders, and I was told five or so was missing. So it was, it's amazing to see the numbers of kids that have started to come out for our programs, not just in athletics, but for everything. And it's exciting to see what we have to offer. I know there were a lot of parents that commented on the community picnics and the different organizations that were there and the things that their kids could get into. So you know, I'm just thrilled that everyone is back and that we offer what we do. And thank you to all the staff because, you know, we can't have school without the cleaners and the bus drivers and the teachers and the assistants and the principals and secretary, everybody. So thank you for everyone showing the kids how much you care about them. And we want to just make sure that we welcome everyone back. So thank you. And now I will turn it over to Mr. Breidenstein.
Okay, a couple of items. Tomorrow is the Indigenous Education Committee meeting at four o'clock, and that is at the ACC. It is not, at this point in time, proving to be a long agenda. We'll set committee dates for the for the year and talk about some student engagement and reporting issues, and then probably having a roundtable discussion, pretty standard fare for the September Indigenous Ed Committee meeting. That's four o'clock tomorrow at the ACC. The Board Personnel Committee did meet on Thursday, and we did talk about the format and process to replace Dr. McKeon on the school board, tentatively with the board's approval. We have set an interview date of nine fourteen. We may have a slight schedule change, so I would like to talk about that tonight, just to get some feedback. That is a purse finance committee meeting, and I know that Karen has some items that we'll need to cover on that. If possible, can we move the board candidate interview from five thirty to approximately six? Okay, the format that we discussed at the Personnel Committee is to invite all six candidates who have expressed an interest in serving on the board, invite them to come in simultaneously. And some have described it as a meet the candidate night where they're all here together, answering questions that the board will devise, or a presidential debate where they'll all be here and we'll ask them questions. It is open to the community. It will be in the LGI. And I'm just inquiring if the board is okay with pushing it to the six, six fifteen, just so we can let the candidates know. Yes. Okay. And then we'll have some sustenance for us as well. And then we'll invite the candidates in. And Janet and I will work tomorrow to contact the candidates to make sure that they're available. If by chance there is a significant scheduling issue, we'll advise, and then we can always revisit and talk if there's an option or a different venue in which you want to proceed. But that's the plan as of now, and then we'll reach out to the six candidates tomorrow. Uh, yes, I'm not sure I can rattle them off by memory. Ken, Janet, do you have them?
We have Zach Tucker, Kenneth Neary, Jessica Kraus, Chad Ryder, Nicole Jimerson.
Tisha Sealy.
That's the six.
Good, okay. So the last piece that I want to talk about is the status of Prospect Elementary. So for those who are unaware, about ten days ago, we were made aware by our cleaning crew that there was some issues and observances of mold in some classrooms. The cleaning custodian crew did what we would expect them to do. They cleaned the entire site where they found that and reported it to us. Once we became aware of that, which would have been the next day, we immediately caucus, we brought in stool environmental and testing, and they tested approximately eighteen rooms, and they found multiple instances of above baseline or substantially above baseline for Aspergillus penicillum, which is common everyday mold. It occurs in buildings. It occurs outside in the community. It's one of the most common forms of mold that is out there. As soon as they tested and informed us, while we were waiting the official test results, we had reached out to Metro Environmental for professional remediation of those sites. At this point in time, there are approximately fifty-four spaces at Prospect, the main office, the library, the cafeteria, the gym, a cafeteria, an azim, and classroom settings. Of those fifty-four classrooms, twenty-three are clear, mold-free, no concerns. Thirteen are nearly done, but are still having some ongoing monitoring in those spaces, and twelve are still listed as a concern. That means Metro has not completely cleaned and remediated the space, or we're still having issues with excessive humidity in the building. The cause of the mold in the 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 incident is exacerbated by external humidity, basic weather outside, and the fact that the system within the building is not, was not calibrating to adjust to the increases in humidity. We've identified approximately a three to four day period where the outside ambient humidity was excessive in the eighties or low nineties percent of humidity, rain occurred, and the system was essentially in in unoccupied mode, sucking in the outside humid air. There was concerns before that that the humidity was a little bit higher, but not terribly uncomfortable in the building, but still it was a concern in early August. Those two colliding forces met about eight days ago, ten days ago, when over the weekend it exacerbated what was probably pre-existing mold, which is in every space normally, with the right conditions of excessive humidity and air circulating at an inoperable, suboptimal level that created the circumstance. When Metro had come in and approximately two-thirds of the rooms are just about ready to roll, we've addressed what we believe the causes and have a remediation plan for the humidity, keep the building at an optimal humidity level for us so that we don't have a recurrence. We still have approximately a third of our classrooms that need to make sure that they're cleared, cleaned, and the thumbs up. Then we have the monumental task of putting Humpty Dumpty back together again. In this case, Humpty Dumpty is Prospect Elementary and the classrooms. We've had to pull significant items out of quite a few classrooms. Mold likes anything organic, paper, felt, construction paper, books, wood surfaces, puzzles, anything that is organic is a breeding ground in high humidity and low circulation of air for potential mold that was already there and existing. What we will need to do over approximately the next seven days is work with Metro. What we will need to do over approximately the next seven days is work with Metro. We will be training our staff to add additional manpower, people power to help remediate those spaces. There will be a training of our staff on Thursday and then we will deploy our staff to assist Metro in cleaning the items that were removed from each classroom and then reassembling them. My best guess and estimate as of today, barring any unforeseen setbacks, is that we will accept students back on Wednesday, the 15th. That is my best guess as of today. We may make more progress in cleaning the consumable items that had been removed from the classrooms. We met with Prospect staff today to talk about what their preference is, having their rooms ready and pristine or accept students back. And universally, they stated, we want kids back. We can deal with bulletin boards later. We can deal with the rearrangement of construction paper and things of that nature. We will absolutely have to replace significant numbers of items in the classrooms that are either not worth cleaning or are going to take too long for the price to get them back to the point where they can use them. We will continue to make that assessment as we are moving forward. We have a tent onsite behind Prospect to be fully transparent with the board and the community. We cannot clean or remediate these items in the buildings. They've all been bagged and are either removed already to a trailer outside the building or an industrial bag sealed by Metro so that there is no likely contamination or cross-contamination. As I mentioned, there has only been one instance of any mold reoccurring in a classroom that has been cleaned. That was, I believe, in room 114 or 115, one of the pre-K rooms. The room was cleaned, there was a wood table and there was instances the next day where there was mold. In the conversation today, Metro Environmental and Stoll Environmental, who's done the testing, suggested to us that there was probably mold still there after it was completely cleaned. But because of the temperature, because of the organic material in the wood, it probably was still there. We're probably going to throw that table out. We don't want it coming back and we will need to replace some items. Our plan is to train staff on Thursday and we will deploy as many resources as we have with our cleaning crew, the superintendent, anyone who's interested in being trained can help go through those items. So long as you feel comfortable and you feel safe, we will take the necessary health, safety and PPE precautions to make sure that's the case. But my main concern is getting as many of those classrooms put back together as quickly as we can, as safely as we can to accept students. Our target date is now Wednesday, the 15th. As we get through this, this Thursday, this Friday, the Saturday, the Sunday, Rich Pankowski, our Director of Facilities, has been directed to call in our existing personnel to authorize overtime of our staff to deploy as many of our existing cleaning staff to support the work of Metro. They are cleaning the big sites. We're going through the stuff that our kids will use once they're trained. In the meantime, we'll continue to do testing of the site. And as we've discussed previously, whether it's COVID or snow days, if it's not safe, I'm not opening the building. And if we get to the point where I believe it's safe, based on the best information from Metro, from Stoll, from Gail Pavone, from Kim Oaks, from Dr. Beeler, Mrs. McGara, Mrs. Dudak, Mr. Pankowski and the cleaning crews, this isn't going to be a one person makes the decision. Ultimately, I will be the one that will make the final decision. But if there's a concern, then we will hear it either from the staff and the building administrators from the central office or our cleaning and custodial crew. Someone asked me last week and again today, if I could put it into terms that's not really mold related. So cleaning the space while the humidity is still high, as I've said to staff today, it's the equivalent of feeding a toddler spaghetti and trying to clean them while they're still eating the spaghetti. Not really the most productive use of time. And the best I can tell staff is to why some rooms were completely impacted by the Aspergillus penicillum is very much like a tornado. It leaped, we're not quite sure, other than to say that the optimal conditions in room 114 existed, but in room 115, they absolutely did not. So that's our concern with buildings and grounds. Stoll Environmental, UNS, HVAC, DV Brown, the contractor that installed it, Turner, Hunt and other outside sources have been engaged completely to assist us with trying to do this. The last piece I will tell you is today they delivered 13 or 15 industrial dehumidifiers. Mark, Karen, is that number about a dozen or so? Okay, the large industrial dehumidifiers for the classrooms to suck out additional air. We've had additional dehumidifiers that we purchased last week as well as temperature sticks to measure the temperature and the relative humidity in the classrooms. And we've ordered some more of those. The last piece that we discussed today is that the engineers have recommended that we purchase an external humidity monitor and that that is built into the protocols with UNS and our buildings and ground staff to make sure that we're monitoring the external humidity and making the necessary adjustments to the system to be ahead of any weather conditions. And we'll update tomorrow.
So have the parents been notified that school is not gonna, Prospect's not gonna reopen until the 15th?
A notice should have gone out this afternoon.
So if any parents have any issues or questions, they can contact Ms. Pavone?
They can contact Ms. Pavone and contact myself, they can contact Dr. Beeler or Mrs. McGara. They can get any building, any Prospect administrator or central office administrator.
Does anyone have any questions for Bob? All right then, we'll move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Carrie. Second by Sue. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item A is our old business. Number A is our policies. So we need a motion to approve policies 1650, 3420, 3520, 5511, 8130. We have second reading for the policies to be deleted of 7150, 7243. So we need a motion to approve the policies that were listed. Motion by Dale, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item nine under new business, item A is Turner Construction Contract. So we need a motion to approve the extension to Turner Contract Amendment. Motion by Brad. Second by Dale. Are there any questions on this? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item B is our surplus items that are listed in the agenda. So we need a motion to declare all the items surplus. Motion by Sue. Second by Dale. Are there any questions on any of the surplus items?
Psychological evaluations and what I believe are encyclopedias.
Okay, good question. So we have a motion by Sue, second by Dale. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item C is to close a dormant bank account and transfer the funds over. So we need to close the 2021 bank account and transfer it to class of 2025 for $449.99. We need a motion to do that. Motion by Brad, second by Sue. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item D is our Cataragus and Wyoming Counties Project Head Start Agreement and Collaborative Agreement. So we need a motion to approve those agreements. Motion by Carrie, second by Dale. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item E, we are creating some positions. So we need a motion to approve three new food service helpers at a 10-month position. Motion by Sue, second by Carrie. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And item F is our Medicaid. So we need a motion to approve the Medicaid resolution. Motion by Carrie, second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And item G is our District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. So we need a motion to approve the final plan. Motion by, was that Dale? Second by Sue. Are there any questions on the attached DCIP plan?
Yeah, who wants to give us a rundown?
I would be happy to do that. So for the past six years, the district has developed a, what we call the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. The goal of this is to prioritize four or five areas that we wish to focus on. This is usually a collaborative effort that usually takes probably six to nine months of various meetings that occur. The priorities are also aligned with the district goals that we, or Mr. Breidenstein talked about earlier. The five goals that we've identified for priorities for this year are accelerating student achievement, particularly those needs that have been heightened by the COVID-19 pandemic, bringing students back to in-person school with supports, specifically social emotional learning as well as academic, improving our diversity, equity and inclusion practices, focusing on writing as well as life skill identification and work strategies. When we talk about life skill identifications, we're talking about those particular skills that a student would need to be able to demonstrate and knowledge that they would have to be successful in life, not just in school. We recognize that there's sometimes a disconnect between what a student needs to be successful in the world post-high school and what we teach them. This is to close that gap.
Any other questions? All right, we've got a motion by Dale, second by Sue. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item, item H is our individual agreement for our Chief Equity and Diversity Officer MOA. So we need a motion to approve that MOA. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. Are there any questions? All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item 10 is our Personnel Consent Agenda. So we need a motion to approve the Personnel Consent Agenda. Motion by Sue. Second by Carrie. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. And now we'll introduce any newly appointed staff.
I do not believe that there is anyone on the call that is being appointed this evening.
Well, welcome all newly appointed staff, even if you're not here. Item 11.
Two of them are coaching this evening.
Yeah, I think so. Item 11 is our information reports. Let's see here. Are up, we got a thank you card from Section 6.
I can, I can read that. This is from Mark DiFilippo, Executive Director of Section 6 Athletics. Bob, just wanted to say thank you again for hosting us yesterday, this was in August, for our AD's workshop. Every one of your staff were so helpful, welcoming and genuinely hospitable. That is a tribute to the culture you and Salamanca have created, reinforced. I know you recognize how great your staff and facilities are. Truly appreciative of all your support for Section 6, our programs and most importantly for me personally, thank you, Mark.
Our upcoming events, again, September 8th is the Indigenous Education Committee meeting at four. Don't forget Title VI at six and there will be pizza. September 14th is finance and then again, the 14th at six, 6:15 to 6:30, we'll be having the special Board of Education meeting to interview the six candidates that we went through before. So everybody, please join in. It should be good to meet the candidates and hear what they have to say and why they're interested in being on the board. And then again, the 21st, we have our next official Board of Education meeting. So thank you, everybody for coming. Be safe, be healthy and we need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Dale. Second by Brad. All in favor? I opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thank you, everyone.